But I mean, I just need to tell them just reason why.
Yeah.
It's my first time dealing with some work.
Well, that's cool. Please, there are a lot of people who use our software.
But, uh...
I'm sorry, you have your, uh...
She thought we were paying one too much.
Most of her...
It's not even working.
Yeah.
And I haven't gotten...
We have a wall full of...
She just called me.
Now, there's essentially about her most disturbing...
Why is it about the...
I, uh...
They love you.
And so finally, you know, he keeps looking over there.
You're excited now?
Yeah.
And she told me that he said that he didn't...
This is not wrong.
Um, when's the, uh...
That's not what...
That's not what I've got in my business.
She was waiting for the person to...
The material...
She was waiting.
And she waited.
And I said, "Don't get on the show."
I'm right here.
All night long.
I'm here for fifteen years.
Yeah.
And that's...
That's right.
You know, I've been certain about you and Scott Scott. You actually could cut it, take it, uh, finish it off.
Wow.
Until somebody figured out here's a bunch of...
You shouldn't just call someone.
Maybe I'll be there.
And I would have called ladies to get over here.
They're taking it.
But you worried that they're all that.
It's hard sometimes.
So...
What's your line?
Right to the...
Show back on the road.
You want to get up?
You want to get up?
Yeah.
For exactly ten minutes.
Yeah.
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 Uh, means call back at order. Uh, before we move on to the next piece of old business, um, I'd like to note that the, uh... John and Martha Gray were here to discuss the CDVG for the old Y. Um, the fact that they had to leave and the fact that we only barely have a quorum. Um, any objection to just pushing that off to our next work session?
I'm fine with me.
Unless they might have something that... Somebody here after chess.
Okay, was that a request?
Okay.
Uh, the next item is city building issues including online billing and payment. Looks like y'all can prepare yourselves.
Thank you. I'm gonna make some general comments. We've just began discussing an online payment system in the last several weeks. And so I'll discuss just generally what we've discussed. And then I think that Jules is gonna provide some detail. He's provided... He's got some flow charts he would like to discuss. Um, several weeks ago, the commission asked the finance to inquire about an online payment system. And to start this discussion, I went back to my finance folks and I asked their opinions about an online payment system. And where would be the best place to start that system? And the finance members felt the best place to start the implementation of a law... Of an online payment system would be with our property tax payments. And the reasoning for that is, uh, the property tax payment, the city sets that, uh, that amount. So we know what the amount is because it's based on, uh, the assessment and the rates that we set. Uh, we also already have a web-based, uh, lookup system right now that people can go online, look up and see what their property tax bills are. So we already have those two items in place. We also, uh, uh, we also are taking, uh, payments when people come to the front counter. We're taking, uh, uh, Visa payments, Visa debit card payments. So, uh, we're already kinda doing, doing it, just not doing it online.
Sure.
So, uh, we felt like maybe the next, next logical step would be, uh, to allow taxpayers to pay online. And, uh, we also, uh, well, also, I will say this, that in Indiana, they're doing some web payments right now. So the company that we're working with, uh, is, uh, is working with some, uh, cities in Indiana that are already doing this. So we're gonna... That's gonna be a little... That's gonna be our first attempt at trying to do this. Uh, we had a phone, uh, meeting, conference meeting with, uh, with our, uh, host, uh, property tax database people that, uh, they host the database as well as they provide the software for our, uh, property tax, uh, name the company's governmental technology, uh, systems. And also, uh, we talked, uh, on the conference call with the national processing or our security card services company that we're using right now, uh, this past Tuesday, actually. We had to get some parties together to discuss this because it's not just us involved in it. We've got some other people that are partnering in this with us. Uh, the discussion with those two groups, uh, we discussed... Here's some of the things we discussed. We discussed, uh, the details of how the system would work. Jules is gonna, uh, provide that, some of that information to you. We also discussed the timeline for implementation. Our thinking was we'd start this in October. If we can get it up running soon, we'll, on a test basis, we've got some people that are still haven't paid their property tax and we... Maybe we'll get it up before then, but if we can't, we'll try and have it up and ramped up by mid-October when we start taking our, uh, our property tax payments. Uh, we also discussed the credit card security. That's an ultimate concern of ours because, you know, we make sure that the taxpayer's protected through this process. Uh, we also discussed the notification of the payment to the city. That's gonna be a key thing because we, you know, we wanna update the records as expeditionally as possible and, and our whole accounting system is based on the integrity of that. So that's a critical process for us. We also discussed, uh, receiving a quote for implementation because governmental technologies, the database, uh, host will, uh, they'll be, uh, heavily involved in this process. So there'll be some costs and printing costs to get it up and going. And I don't know what that's gonna be. I talked with them today to try to get some information, but there's still some money certainly about a couple of things. So we've gotta get, uh, some more information before they really give us a quote. And also, uh, we've been passing the cost through on the credit card. This will get passed through cost to the taxpayer. It'd be anywhere from approximately three and a half to four percent for the taxpayer to, to make an online payment. So we've gotta establish how that's gonna be done as well. So, uh, those are just some of the things we discussed. Juleson, uh, if there's no questions on there, we'll pay you later. Jules is gonna provide you some, uh, some documentation for how it might work, the system might work.
Yeah. Um, here's what I have for, uh, flow diagram for online payment. This is just a, uh, simplification on how this online payment should go. Uh, if Steve wants to implement this, uh, the key components for this would just be the, uh, website and then the national processing center. Uh, the rest are just behind-the-scenes, uh, transactions. So basically what it is is that, uh, when the bill is sent to the taxpayer, the taxpayer will have an option to go to our, uh, website. And, uh, right now, there is new button there for online payment. So the GUTS software will have to be added, uh, the button for online payment. Uh, the GUTS stands for, uh, is a company that's, uh, stands for government utilities technology service. And I think it's based in Indiana.
Right.
Yeah. And, uh, the software that we bought from them is called, uh, PVD, which is a property evaluation, uh, database. So the flow of this is, I actually labeled this at the last minute, where the taxpayer accesses our website and they will click the button for online payment. And then when that is initiated, the GUTS software database will, uh, communicate to the national processing center and push that information for the taxpayers' informations to the NPC. That's actually a credit card processing center where, uh, the transaction is going to be communicated to the merchants bank, uh, back to, uh, national processing center for access by the finance department. So basically, what it is is that, once that online button is turned on, the, within a few seconds, it will ask the information to the taxpayer to key in their, uh, credit card information. So basically, that's what the number two is. And it's, uh, it's an encrypted, uh, transaction, which is, uh, SSL, uh, digital certificate. When you see, uh, HTTPS, when you pay something, that means it's encrypted. It cannot be, uh, intercepted and get information without it. And then, um, the national processing center, which Steve had contacted, it's called Skipjack, and that's actually the processor. So when the national processing center communicates to the credit card company of the taxpayer, it will do the processing to, uh, either decline, to, uh, you know, prove or indicate that the transaction is failed. So the, all the information required for the taxpayers to know if they have successfully paid the taxes or not will be done with the processing center. Now, once that's finished, the, uh, that information can be accessed by finance department. So the finance department will have to be to maintain it. Like, maybe they can do it every hour, half a day or every day, but they have to do it constantly so that they can check the information from the taxpayer. And then once, it's actually all, all web-based, so they can, uh, get the information from, from the national processing center using the report manager and they can export it as, uh, called ACH. You know, it's like a technical term for export of all the transaction reports. And then, once they download it, uh, from the finance department, they have to upload it to the GUTS software, where the GUTS will update their database so that when the taxpayer checks their taxes, if it's paid or not, or, you know, the landlord or whatever, then they will know the updates if it's already cleared. So the flow of information depends on how, uh, soon the finance could pull the information and update the GUTS software. Uh, and then, when that happens, then, uh, I guess you can get your mind?
The whole... The... In addition to your sentence, just to say it clearly, the GUTS software, uh, this used to maintain the property evaluation database. We already, we already have that. We're already using that. And when people pay, the way things are right now, when people pay their property taxes, that's already... That effort, we already have system in place to upload that information to GUTS and for that to be reflected on the, in the database.
That's what they see. When they go online and they're looking at their database, basically.
See what they...
Yeah, what they have.
But that thing is not automatic. They have to manually upload the bouquet.
Yes. Every, every day, uh, our staff updates that data, every day.
Sure.
At the end, at the beginning of the day.
With the previous state records?
Yeah, with the previous, yeah.
Um, and, and, uh, and all the transactions we have so far aren't really digital, as in terms of credit card payments that come in are still, so have to be manually uploaded to the GUTS?
Right, yeah. They're manually input.
Uh, is this... If some of these things is purely digital, does it, does this streamline that process at all or does it also have to be manually uploaded even without us here?
We're kinda discussing that right now. We're hoping we can, we can automate that, but we don't know it at this point. But we're hoping to automate it.
When the online payment is, is done, the transaction, the taxpayer could, uh, could know right away if their payment is clear. So they can do it within the transaction, so they will know if it's paid. But the actual updating of the database to check for other people will be done, depending on how often they do it. They could do it every hour or every, you know, depending on their schedule?
That's a, that's a goal to automate that, is what you're saying. Automate the update of that, uh, of that file for our general ledger and the taxes. That's the, that's the hope we can get there.
Um...
The, 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 the kind of difficulty in this thing is, we've got several things coming in, uh, for payment. We've got the base, the face amount of the tax. We've got a discount. We've got sometimes a penalty, sometimes interest. All that's broken down. And if you look it up in my financial statement, sometimes you'll notice everything's broken down in financial statement. So that breakdown has to stay intact, you know? And, and that's where some of the difficulty lies, that how much data can we transfer over to, you know, back and forth, keep that data intact, that breakdown intact? That's, that's one of the keys.
And I assume that the, I assume that the GUTS software lets people know what they owe at that very particular point in time?
Yeah.
As in, it came today and this...
Yeah, right, right. Yeah. But I don't know when it sends the data, you know? Like, like right now, it doesn't... It's got the total amount due to the taxpayer and it's got the face amount up here, but it doesn't have the interest and penalty broken down on that, in the detail.
Right.
So I don't know if that information's gonna be provided to the, you know, to the credit card company, that level of detail. We may have to... That may cause a problem as far as us having to key it in manually. But if they can provide that data without a lot, uh, a lot of, uh, programming, that would be the best case where we can keep that, that, that level of detail intact.
And Skipjack is proprietary. We would have paid for that or do we already have Skipjack?
Well, I think they, uh, they've got the, uh, they, they actually receive the, the payment or fee through that, uh, three or four percent fee, transaction fee. So they are the one who lets it, technically. Uh, in fact...
But that's still, but from our perspective, that three or four percent has to come out of our end or out of the...
It's come out of the...
Or come out of the, or come out of the...
Yeah, either or. But right now, you know, we're charging it back to the taxpayer. We can't absorb that, that openly, anyway.
Cause some... I probably missed something here. Uh, what would be the drawback to using, uh, like a free middleman who handles that percent themselves, like PayPal or something?
PayPal's gonna charge too.
PayPal charges the three percent?
Yeah. They're gonna... It's all pretty much industry standard, you know?
Well, sure.
So they, yeah, I...
With those transactions?
Yeah. PayPal charges too. There, somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna pay a transaction.
I think any of it.
Yeah.
Uh, and this is, this is an option that, I mean, I think we should make available to people. What's our average property tax bill?
Uh, about $300. Uh, yeah, three, yeah. We need, yeah, we need to average everything, three, three fifty.
So we're talking about charging people like hundred bucks?
Mm-hmm. I'll be honest with you, Commissioner Wilder, we don't have, uh... When people come to the counter...
Yeah.
And they ask if they can use their debit and credit card, and we tell them that we're gonna charge them three and a quarter percent.
Yeah.
They don't do it. They don't want it. I'll bet you, I bet you I haven't had... I don't, I, I can't say separate quote how many I've had, but I'll bet you I haven't had ten people during the tax season out of ten thousand taxpayers taken.
For a bill that high, that's not, that's not surprising. And that's why I expect something like this would have more value on smaller, on smaller bills.
Well, maybe, I think, what, to me, what the value of it is, I could pay my bill without having to drive all the way into City Hall to do it. I would have paid the, the extra money to just get, if that is, I mean, you know, it's not easy, especially depending on where you live in the town. Um, you know, that would be an incentive for me to do it that way. Um, so I don't know if it's a question of, you know, should I use my credit card debit card or should I write a check? To me, it's a real plus.
Yeah, what's your hand? They're probably gonna write a check if they got a check and...
Or shoot, whatever, or something.
But you're right.
Spend some gas, right? If you have only three dollars.
You don't want, you said, drive six miles. What would that get since, uh, so, I'm paying... I agree. I don't know how many people would, would pay nine dollars for that, you know, for that convenience. If you lived in a smaller bill, let's, I mean, say the garbage bill right now, I mean, three percent of sixty dollars.
Yeah.
That does get into a cost factor where some people could weigh that against the means of coming down here and it really is kind of worth it, you know? Um, that's why I question whether, whether or not property taxes are really where, where we're gonna get by on, on this. As opposed to, you know, I just, as opposed to smaller, smaller bills, for that reason?
It, we, I, you know, the, the hope is we can, we can start it here, test it, make sure it works in an environment we're already comfortable with, and then we can roll it out to some other areas. That's, that's the hope. That's the plan, but I've got to have a starting place somewhere, so...
Sure.
The reason why, you know, I, I mentioned at the beginning of the conversation, that's the, that was the logic, because we've already got a lot of stuff in place. That might be the next logical step. But, but the garbage, right now, our garbage system, as we talked today, is kind of in flux, we're still making some changes. I, I feel really uncomfortable about taking it into that area right now.
Oh, understood.
Yeah.
True. Um, you mentioned, though, maybe some startup costs?
Maybe.
Are we talking about hundreds, thousands?
I don't think there is really a startup cost because...
There's gonna be some start, yeah. Well, we talked, you went in, he went in on the conversation today, but I called today to try to nail down what that might be. It's a, we've still got some more discussion points because there's one key point that we don't know about, and that's who's gonna calculate that percentage cost to the taxpayer. Right now, the, the credit card company's doing it, but there's a little bit of, uh, they're wanting, uh, GUTS to put it into their software and send it over to them. And they're, you know, we're not gonna, that's not, that's gonna cost some money to have that programmed into their system. So if we can, we get that part rectified, uh, they, they said they could probably hold it to a minimal amount, whatever that means. I'm thinking anywhere from, is what I'm thinking, but I don't know. Maybe a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars to get it, to get it up and running.
That's what I'm...
Yeah. Well, there might be some, there might be some annual maintenance fees. I don't think so, but there might be some, some kind of maintenance fee, you know, the update software or whatever, if they need to update it.
Well, that's the kind of thing I assume we're already potentially experiencing with the...
Yeah, we're already paying some, but they may, they may adjust, is what I'm saying. They may adjust it, but, Commissioner, that's just my thinking. I, I don't know for sure. He just said it, he would try to hold it to a minimal amount if they could, if they could work out that one situation about where they didn't have to program, uh, the, uh, the fees. And, and my understanding is they did, they, like I said, they've done this in, in Indiana. And, uh, they had a really bad experience because they had to do a lot of programming caused, reconciliation because of this, uh, this fee. And they tried to handle it on their side on about maybe ten or so prototypes, and it didn't work at all and it was scrapped.
And you're talking about the credit card company?
Uh, I'm talking about GUTS. GUTS wrote the, uh, the program that holds our database. They wrote, uh, the program to include, when they passed, uh, the cost over to the, uh, the credit card company, included the fee. And that didn't work well. So, uh, he said, a lot of the, well, all the cities that they tried in, uh, they, they ended up stopping it because it just, it wasn't working well at all. He said that if they can get the fee to go on the, on the credit card side, that, that they've had success in, in a couple of the cities that they've done, uh, Indiana doing it that way. So that's his suggestion.
And so we put the onus actually on the...
Cause they're getting the money anyway, you know? They're, they're the ones getting the money and they're already doing it right now. So it seems to make sense to me that they would, you know, that they would put the, lay the, the fee charges on their side because they'll get the fee and it's already working that way now in the system we've got now. So, you know, that would be my common sense logic, but we're still working that one out.
And that would potentially negate even that pretty minimal startup cost?
Yeah, we can hold it now. We can hold it now. Like he was saying, you know, it could be five or ten thousand dollars if they had to go back and reprogram their, uh, their software.
Yeah.
So he doesn't wanna get in, they don't wanna get in here because it's not, he says it most likely won't work as well as the cost on our side is gonna be, you know, inhibited in here in our, like, they don't wanna do this thing.
And, and in broad terms, I mean, if we were only discussing this in the context of property taxes, then I'd say it's not even worth a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To get us to that point. I mean, but if, if the purpose here is to open the door to kind of, you know, broaden more widespread, where people can pay any city you don't want to, including tickets and things like that, with parking fines. You know, if, if, if that's the direction we're moving in, then I think that, that can be cost effective for people. And I think we would see more of that. Frankly, that's just the way the future, I think, we're getting to a point where folks are gonna expect to be able to pay this, uh, online with the opportunity. So even though, you know, locked property taxes are just a gateway.
Yeah, honestly.
Technically.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty well put there.
So we'll continue to work on it and we'll, we'll update you if we see any, any major changes that we feel like we talked here.
While we got you here, uh, and this is a, this is a question for Steve. Um, then as far as this discussion, uh, back to the previous discussion item, there's a tax in the onus for code enforcement and billing along for tenants as opposed to property owners? What you got?
You can probably, you probably can imagine what I mean, but, uh, you know, I, what I see happening is, is if we're, we're billing once every six months, it's gonna be very difficult, uh, to chase, you know, the tenant around. So from a billing aspect, you know, I'm just concerned about our collection percentage, uh, percentage of un-collection going up, you know, as a result of trying to, uh, chase the tenant as opposed to billing landlord.
And that's something that I think you're aware of.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a...
Uh, it, it, I've got some other concerns, uh...
I'm curious about how, let's, let's say we all said this is what we're willing to do.
Well, let me say, let me, let me tell you this, okay? When you get the database from, uh, the, uh, it's got two addresses on there. If it's a rental property, it's got the billing address, it's got the, uh, the address location. So we're gonna have to kind of flip-flop back and forth between those two addresses to know, you know, depending on the situation for the particular tenant or, uh, the property, for that leased property. So right now, the database is already a little messy. You know, I'm, I'm, every month, every time we send out a bill, okay, for, before we send out a bill, it takes me, from the time I get the database from the PVA to the time I get the database finalized, to send to, to, to GUTS, governmental technology to send the, uh, bill out for us, it probably takes us at least a month and a half to get the database finalized. Cause I'm manually touching everything. It, it, it concerns me because, you know, like, for example, property tax, we get that database, it goes out.
Sure.
We can send it out, we don't have to, we don't have to manipulate the database. But the, uh, the garbage, uh, fee is not like that because you have to remove property that has, uh, only, uh, land that has to come off there.
Sure.
Because they get, they get a, uh, they get a property tax bill, but they won't get a garbage bill because there's no units sitting on it. So that has to come off. Then we have to take their businesses off because they don't get a, uh, garbage bill.
And then we take out all the small cart?
Uh...
They're gonna get, uh...
What's that now? Oh, yeah, we, we'll have to do that too.
In the next round?
Yeah, well, that, that, yeah, yeah. And that, and part of the new, new round is, you know, you've gotta figure out who gets a bill and who doesn't get a bill. Uh, let's see what else. There's another change. Oh, we have to put the, all the rental units on there because it's not on there right now. You know, it's one, uh, one piece of property, you might have four units with one unit.
Sure.
So that has to go on there. And now we're just adding, you know, more complexity to the bill, is what I'm saying. So I'm just afraid this is gonna get so muddy that it's a lot of chance for error on the bill. So I'm, I'm just worried about.
Um, it seems, and this might be a question for, uh, you and Sonny. We might, I think, we have any different paper?
Gary had a ten, a revision, Frank, for me.
But, but if we could use a G, if we could use GIS in conjunction with that database, then maybe we'll start to have a GIS database that has all the prime information on it.
Yeah.
We could kind of tie them together, that may be some way that...
And in terms of, in terms of assembling the database, and obviously, ideally, once you've got a digital system, ideally you can get something set up that doesn't require manual entry, you know, throughout, but ideally you can set up something that is relatively efficient. And if, if some of these questions tie into, a lot of the stuff tied together, obviously, but some of these questions tie into questions we've got in code enforcement of getting rental properties, images on our books officially, and rental properties for the safety inspections and all that sort of stuff, then, then it seems that there's some... and all that sort of stuff, then it seems that there's some lit thing and data entry there that can be on, can be on now.
Yeah, right. And I think Jules, he's, he's talked about this several times, I'm with Jules, to try to utilize the GIS.
Technically, we are actually using it now, but I guess we have to educate them on how GIS could work, because right now they're doing a manual taking on our website to see if the property is a business or on city property. But, I think Bobby probably could speak more of this, because he is responsible for the database for the cities. He can actually do a lot of work for Steve. If we already started to talk about this, and we can probably do a matching on his database to JHS, so that we can manage it, where it is, if we can locate that. Because what he has is just a table, but JHS will locate it, so we can probably display it on the map, and then you can do some kind of processing with JHS and see and double check his database. So there are many ways you can do cross checking to clean this data. Because right now, they're doing a manual taking, and it's, you're doing nine thousand database, that's a lot of work. But JHS could do it automatically.
I guess the deeper point here is this is kind of a lot of the number one department, but what we're talking about is an overlap between the finance department and IP and lighting, so there seems to be opportunities to not put all the burden in one area. Does that all sound right, Bobby?
Sounds good.
All right. Do we have any questions? I agree to throw off the CDVG until midnight. Does anybody have any old business, you know, those things, your old board of business here? As I thought, you go ahead and request it. I was gonna bring up the longevity data and compensation policy that we got back in light of the light commission, and then just actually getting along with it, and you'd actually add that to the night. Just kind of continuing that pressure. Okay, so we have new business. Do you have any new business? Well, we've got some more discussion items. Anybody else to stick around, they're welcome to. If not, you're welcome to sit over here. Oh, let's hear it. But if we could get you up here.
With the big man.
I bet, yeah, I bet, we're pretty informal, but we like to keep it all on the record.
I mean, and I just, this is a comment. You had a better forum here today, and I wanted these last two discussion items. I have no idea what Jeff's gonna say about the definition of gravel or the discussion, but my point is, especially the discussion on the East Frankfurt Park, it wouldn't be better than where East hotels is. There's five people here listening, we do it.
Without objection, I think that, I don't know that there's a decision that needs to be made today, and I'll agree on holding on, finding a formal decision, but there's information to be shared. I just assume we go ahead and hear, like I said, we do videotape these to post them online, so there's a chance opportunity for everybody else to catch up with Steve.
Okay, that's fine, I just was concerned about the possibility of having to repeat advice, go through advice, and something said one time, but not said the next, in the first person.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, and that's why I agree with you. Just make this form of information, or if they've got information provided to go on some of these subjects, provide the information, and then, I know I've missed a meeting or two before, and I've had to catch up by watching it online, so I probably agree. I will, certainly no expectation of any decision or in-depth conversation on it, really, for me and I, in fact, just more informational to me.
That's fine, but I do, I would wish that for all that discussion, on the whole thing be postponed until there's more people here.
So, is there a, this is still demolition?
We recently had a meeting of all the department heads and Mr. Grant Cobbland of Nelson Home, who carries our liability insurance for the city. Following that meeting, I received a letter from Mr. Cobbland, and he's here today with us, thank you for being with us today. Mr. Cobbland was expressing the potential liability that we have with the East Frankfurt Pool, in that a child or anything of that matter, an adult, could get hurt or injured if they wandered onto the premises, and right now, there's a fence around it, but occasionally a tree falls across the fence and allows deterioration of the fence and allows people to actually gain access to the pool, which has been out of commission now for quite some number of years, I'm not certain how many. Mr. Parrish, do you know how long the pool has been?
This will be the fourth summer.
Fourth summer, it's been decommissioned, so to speak. And so, Mr. Cobbland has identified this as an attractive nuisance for children or anyone else that might wander on the premises. And he suggests that the pool be permanently closed, and there's several things that could be done, there's several options. I think the most prominent option that's been mentioned is to actually break up the pool, make sure that all the equipment is out of order, make sure all the chemicals are absent from the site, and actually fill it in and smooth it out, so that there's no opportunity for someone to fall into it. And so, Mr. Cobbland, did you want to add to that, or Mr. Parrish, you all want to? Answer the questions of the mission.
I might add, it's always nice to see a fellow insurance guy here, remember. Want to identify yourself?
My name is Grant Cobbland, I work at Schenault and Hogue Insurance. I'm the agent responsible for the city attorney in most of its questions. And we represent the Kentucky League of Cities, I'm the city's policy, and some three years ago, we went through with an engineer, which, they go out, an engineer actually goes out and looks at your potential liabilities, and then always sends us little notes saying, these are the potential liabilities, somebody needs to give some thought to them. So we did that some three or so, four years ago, and one of his, one of their comments was the pool, East Frankfurt Pool and its unsafe nature, and why was it closed, and we explained all that, and we keep it fenced, and we, you know, we have somebody that lives out there all year round. But their comment is that it's, it's an attractive nuisance, and they continue to maintain that, they don't want to surcharge us for it, it's just that if we have a liability suit, somebody gets hurt, child, so forth, creates some thought that they need to be on the other side of the fence, and then something happens, you can be trapped inside, you can be trapped so that you can't get in, you know, you can be on the outside, but you can get inside, you can be trapped inside. So, the pool just represents what we call an attractive nuisance, is such a potential liability to the city. So, we became aware, we were having some conversations not long ago about the city's liability and how to begin to limit it some, that we really hadn't made a move to limit our liability a lot lately, or a lot of the past number of years, and so we started talking about certificates of liability and things like this, and the pool, I brought the pool back up, and said, you know, three years ago they said something, and about two years ago they've said something, and four years ago this, and we stopped the pool because of the crack and the leakage of chemicals and so forth, and so it was, we closed it intelligently, and we thought something was gonna be done three or four years ago, but nothing's ever happened, and we still have our pool, so I just made that comment. Mr. Cobbland said, asked me if I would send him a letter, and I said, sure, I'll send you a letter. I do think that something needs to happen to it. Became aware at that meeting that Mr. Hackbar's got some concrete he needs to get rid of, and the pool can be closed easily enough. Apparently, there's gonna be a whole lot of concrete sidewalk, because it needs to go somewhere, and it might be a good location for some of the concrete sidewalk, but it needs to, something needs, right now, what I'm using it on, it's just an empty building, empty lot, empty thing, and we have kids on 306 degrees of it. It's not too far from our frisbee ockles.
Surrounding.
Surrounding.
But, as you all know, the pool had some real problems, not just the concrete and the expansion joints had separated, and we tried to repair them for several years, and it was leaking massive amounts of water, as well as chlorine. There are no chemicals on site right now, by the way, so they've all been removed, but in order to repair the pool, you'd have to, we've been in contact with a company called, this was years ago, a few years ago, Renosys, who puts pool liners in, Commissioner Head had asked us to look at that. And you're well at six digits for a pool the size of East Frankfurt, for a pool liner to do that, plus the pumps and the, one of the big issues, the sand filter was deteriorated, you know, it's forty years old, it was gonna need replacing anyway, filtration system, which within health department regulations nowadays, to upgrade to what we'd need, you would need two filtration systems, because the infant or baby pool and the regular pool would have to be separated, since they're not all one unit. So, it would be a pretty extensive financial project to begin to renovate it and open it. And another thing that, also, when Mr. Cobbland brought this up, I discussed with Public Works, and I was just talking to Tom back there, the gas company is doing a project on Myrtle Avenue, right there coming up, and gonna need a place to dump quite a bit of fill, which is right there by the pool, so that was another situation that if we're gonna, if we're gonna do something, which, you know, we probably need to act fairly rapidly in order to get that fill, or they're just becoming from Myrtle Avenue, just right up to East Frankfurt, so it'll be, you know, free fill. The lady just explained to me, we'd have to take a whole ram and break up the bottom, so it wouldn't drain, and then fill it to a certain point, and then you would gravel it, and either concreted or sawed it, or whatever top surface you wanted to use, where it's level with the rest of the day.
I do have some questions, just to get a little more information on the table. Do you have some idea of the bottom line? On one end, you say this is, either way, is it not gonna impact our chance rate?
Well, eventually, well, I mean, eventually, as we speak today, it's not. Eventually, you know, enough bad things present themselves, the answer is, yes, it will. Or if we have laws, certainly it will at that point.
Sure. And then, what's the bottom line again, in terms of the cost to the city to fill it?
I don't have an exact cost, but if you're.
Oh, to fill it? How much would this?
Looks like the cost, the cost is gonna be, the cost of jackhammering the pool, so that it can actually drain instead of whole water, which you would probably do anyway, but you can't take a chance, but Mr. Hackbar might have an idea for us.
I was looking for the B ballpark. I thought you were talking about, I thought you were talking about the renovation. No, I don't think so. It'd just be a matter of using a whole ram for a day or two, wouldn't you think, Jeff?
Yes.
A whole ram, just to break up the concrete, you know, and then, and then if we can get the free fill, you know, even if it takes a while, you know, there's no charge, and people look for a place to dump clean fill. Especially if the gas company's doing that project right there on Myrtle Avenue. There would be a little problem, you know, if, what type of top service, if we decided to saw the area, or if we decided to concrete the area, there would be an expense there, so I don't think, I think you'd be looking honestly under ten thousand dollars.
What's the depth of the deep end?
Twelve foot.
And is it, is it ever fully standing on these things?
Yeah, we have to pump it out. We keep a pump in, and occasionally, after rain, we will pump it out probably, it just depends on rain falling, stuff, but yes, it does.
And do you have any future plans or ambitions for the site?
Well, you know, back when the pool was closed, we were asked, or back when the aquatics center was being talked about, we were asked to look at some potential uses for Juniper Hill and East, if both of them were closed. One thing that was, that came up for East was a pavilion, a shelter that we've talked about. There's no concrete plans, I mean, just suggestions. Yeah, something that might bring some revenue to the city, you know, like a corporate pavilion, or maybe even a small spray ground that you don't have to have, you know. So those were items that were just discussed.
Any questions?
Would it negate ever using it for an aquatics center?
You just go in, dig the concrete out, and put it back in again, I mean, it's just a matter, and then you gotta give thought to the public's availability to the location, it's not a simple, you know, in, you know, the availability of the site is not great to the public. The end of Myrtle Avenue gets to be tougher and tougher, and back when crosstalk acres and all of that was in thriving mode, and younger people living in, they could drift into the park and use it, now it's part of very little drift in to use it, most everything comes, my car, I would say.
When we had our master plan done, it was not one of the top three sites for aquatics.
Great, you guys will look back to our age group, when it was being used. Up to your age group.
All we need, so, Grant.
Any other questions? Feel free to contact us.
I'd like to ask Mr. Hackbar, on these construction exchanges of materials and things, do you think they would dose it and level it for us once they dump their fill in? Because that could be an expense.
What we, I've talked to Columbia Gas, and of course, the city took over the sidewalks, and so we have plans on doing one side of Myrtle Avenue, the city project, and the gas company is gonna do the other side of Myrtle Avenue, it's a long street, and it's a, a lot of bad, scary. And so, what, in talking with Columbia Gas, rather than going down the center of the street and cutting up the pavement, offer the sidewalk, and that way, you don't have to deal with traffic control, and we would pay the concrete, and they would pay the labor for sidewalks and curbs back.
Which is kind of our standard.
So it's kind of standard offer. So, if we have a place to dump, and we get off of this, this location, there's gonna be a lot of concrete, a lot of them alone, rather than, it's gonna be all over town. Open up a bid for sidewalk work that we have, we're gonna do many projects inside, so we probably don't have enough space in this one location to accommodate all the fill. But as far as, would they place it, I'm assuming they're transporting it to the pool, we'll have to jackhammer the pool, the bottom out, so that the water doesn't pond. I guess, at some point, it's gonna be important to know what the use of this property is gonna be. I guess our goal is just to fill it up, so it's not a liability. So, I guess at this point, no one really knows what the end use of this property is gonna be, but I think we want to make sure it's broke up into like pieces that can be compacted, but. like probably your best size, pack material. So once we break the bottom pool and the water drains through, that whatever we fill in there won't settle over time. We want to make sure that it's an engineered fill that won't settle out since we don't know what it's going to be the end use of that, that site.
But it would make it a lot less expensive to have to move the short distance versus the further distance, for instance to the, to your lot of, bone of the road.
Right. But that's one of the expenses, right?
Well, I mean, we hire a contractor to do the other side of the road and then it's on our behalf.
And it's still save them money, so seems like somebody ought to be able to negotiate Columbia Gas and the parks, I mean, everybody's got trucks and men, somebody ought to be able to move it.
I think the key is keeping, whatever they take out, keeping it small so when they dump it in the hole, you don't have to go in there and jackhammer what they dump in the hole. So I think maybe that's something we can do with their contractors, give them some guidance on how they break it up before they dump it down.
Maybe, maybe I'm just saying, saying something to you. Both Columbia, both Columbia Gas and the city are going to have to dump, are going to have to unload a fair amount of fill. There's potentially an expense associated with that. All things being equal, I'd rather the city save money than Columbia Gas and I miss exactly.
It's just, we have more sidewalk to do than just Myrtle Avenue.
Sure.
They are planning to start, I guess, in two weeks, so maybe that's why this is more of a, our, our plan is we're going to wait for them to do their work first, so we didn't promise them anywhere to go, it was just a matter, they're supposedly going to start very soon.
Right.
I don't care who. I'm a taxpayer, I'm just like.
And then our bid with the contractors who we're going to contract with, we did not operate a place to dump, so our bid prices are good to pay. Whether we offered to or, or East Frankfurt Pool or not, our bid prices, they have to go find a place to dump. So it doesn't, at this point, it doesn't impact our prices.
Either way.
Either way.
And then, and then you ask other questions. I remember this over two weeks. So you want to hear something back from us? Is that a key?
Just make sure that we don't fill something up and say, oops.
I was just saying, we were talking like if, if we are going to fill the pool, which I, you know, we did a decision to fill it, but if they're doing, whoever, whoever's doing the project right there on Myrtle Avenue, it's, you know, whether it's a monetary thing or not, it's a good way to get the pool filled.
Sure.
They're paying here concrete and stone for number twos.
Oh, yeah. They can actually free build something.
And then we can all drop back to the drawing board and see what we want to use the silver for, because that's been, you know, that's been five years ago since we discussed that, or the area.
I will say that's my only hangup, it's not knowing what we're going to use the space for, I'd certainly obviously hate to do something that we can, turn around and undo, but.
No plan for it. And around it is nothing but Dog Park and Frisbee Golf and baseball, I mean, and pavilion may be a great idea, it'd fit easily on top of it.
So we can direct Commissioner Head to watch this conversation online. I don't think the mayor can watch as many videos online, but I assume that we can communicate all this with the mayor, he doesn't already, he's already at the speed on it so that we can all come in on the same page next, next week if you're up with it. We did agree we wouldn't make any decisions.
Sure.
Today, I was just discussing.
Thanks for working with me. Thank you. And then the, the last discussion item, probably a very short one, but.
The one we've all been waiting for.
Yeah. There were some technical reasons we needed to define gravel because.
Well, there's a, there's a couple issues. When we brainstormed six months ago about potential ordinance, I guess was the thought and work on gravel, Tom Bradley and I went to, we're members of the Kentucky Stormwater Association and there are cities that have stormwater utilities and have to deal with the stormwater phase two permit. And one of the big discussion was, when you consider utility, which I guess we are consulting on board now and we're going down the road, doing feasibility study of whether the city and the county want to partner together to do utility. One of the topics discussed in our meeting was gravel and the city elected, said, don't laugh because we've passed the stormwater utility and gravel impacts, how to treat it, impervious or pervious, what be that lot would pay and so if you have gravel lot, parking lot, your stormwater thing looks a lot different if you consider it pervy or impervious. And so that was one, one issue. Right after that, we had, sometimes we have neighborhoods, someone moves into a house and they dump gravel on the side of the road because they need extra parking and that becomes one neighbor that looks messy and sightly and weeds grow up and when it's wet, the wheel falls in the rut and it's marked that aesthetic thing.
But does the technical ordinance allow for that right now?
Technically our ordinance says you have to, uh, a surface, a, it's, it's kind of, so there's a, there's a planning and zoning issue with gravel and there's potentially the stormwater utility, how you treat it in terms of a, does it soak water in or does it run water off? And so I'm not saying we need to decide on it right now, it's just something, as we get into the stormwater utility feasibility study, we may have to develop some, some plans which were, how we go down the road. And this gravel is a big deal according to license because they were, you know, people gravel walkways, gravel pull offs, gravel, that, you know, it got into a really hard line to having to charge people and it became a pretty divisive topic, which listen to the gravel, they were calling that, they said, don't, don't make that mistake, kind of defined that up on the front and run it.
I would just assume the gravel is pervious, is that not, is it?
Well, it's, pervious well is like, you know, in gravel parking lot.
Sure.
Doesn't run water off as easily as grass because it's compact. So it depends on.
So it's kind of a gray area?
It's kind of a gray area.
In some, I was just going to say, in some cases, natural resources will allow you to use a gravel cap, dense grade aggregate cap in place of an asphalt cap over a site where you have hazardous substances and you're capping it and so in some cases, the Division of Waste Management will authorize the use of a dense grade aggregate or gravel cap.
Right.
Their thought being that it is pervious. Of course, that's got to be properly impacted, those types of issues.
We have pervious pavers and we drill under those so that it drains through, so I mean it's.
Right.
There's, there's no wrong answer, but they're, they're just looking down the road. That'll be a topic at some point.
Anybody have anything else they want to put on the table? Speaking on purpose, hold your peace.
I, I, we've got two commissioners who are not with us today, they're both out of town, could not be with us and Mayor Graham wanted me to say that he was committed to announce a meeting prior to the scheduling of this meeting and he could not in good conscience cancel that obligation.
You moved it, who's second? Thank you. Commissioner Turgeon?
Uh, yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Proctor Wilding?